I ask that clarifying.
Good morning, Board. Everybody hear me?
Morning, sir.
Chairman, Board. Glad to see you guys. You need to fix your speaker. Do you need some more taxpayer dollars so I can hear you? I'm kind of deaf anyway, but I can turn it up.
Turn it up.
We just did.
We just did? Okay. First of all, I want to thank you guys. You guys are doing a wonderful job up here with what issues we have going on. You really, really are. I want to praise you and pray for you, pray for the wisdom you guys are going to need and the thick skin you're going to need because you're going to get hammered by a lot of people. But it's not your fault. You guys are doing wonderful, and I'm going to make sure that everybody knows that, that I know. I have some issues that I want to talk about. I'm sure you're well aware of all of them. But we're going to go over some notes that I took. First of all, dispersal of the water. How are we going to do that? I know we've got a lot of water coming, and we like pay the farmers to maybe disperse water over their farmland. I know paying farmers is probably costs taxpayers some money, but it's a lot cheaper than fixing towns and property. If we could get farmers to put water on their fallow ground, trees, whatever, just take all the water we can to disperse this extra 2 million acre feet we have. So I just want that to be in public records. Hopefully, we can have a plan to do so. Don't know if that's possible, but it's a good plan, I think. Keeping the Kings River flowing would be great without any back pressure coming up the river from the lake bottom. I know right now I flew over it on Saturday, flew over the whole valley, flew over all the creeks coming in and took hundreds of pictures and videos. I see the water from Kings is going to Dudley Ridge. It's not going into 749 right now at all. I know the Tulie River is still going into the South Lake Basin, and it's going into those other, the Rico and that other one. But 749 is empty, okay? It's still great brown land out there. I see real six pretty John Deeres out there with tomato planters on the back, right in the middle of 749. That was my land. I'd get them out of there, but why are they still there? You guys, you know, I'm just telling you things that you guys already know. It's kind of bad. You know what happened to around the Corcoran Prison? What happened to Allensworth, Alpa? That's way premature. It's inevitable. It's going to happen, but not yet. It shouldn't have happened yet. You know, I know our governor wants to let prisoners out, but flooding them out is not a good thing. But you still see the water all around the prison right now. Not a good thing. But will it happen? Yeah, probably. And it's crazy. What others premature is just that water going to the ocean. I hate that, but I love it this year. I really do. We have to push that water out. I know you guys are getting hammered about, oh, we need more storage and all that. Of course, we do. But we need to address the issues we haven't had. That's way too late to build a lake up there, or two lakes. But I know if this board was running this country, we'd have had them already, guarantee it. Like I said, you guys are doing great. I don't have a lot of faith in our upper government, but I have a lot of faith in you guys. And we're going to do what we can do to protect our island district. Or say it breaks up in Reedley or Kingsburg, because if we get all that water flow, it could break up there, not here. You guys are well aware of all these issues. I just want it said. The main river levee coming by Pool Two just would be a little bit south of Pool Two and Stratford. That main river levee, you know where it's at, Joe, of course, and Nevada and 20th and a half. I don't know what kind of maintenance we're doing on that. Do you guys have any insight on that? Joe?
If I may comment.
Your questions go through the chair. Everyone's listening, but direct your questions to the chair.
Okay.
So I'm sorry. No, that's okay. We're doing.
I'm getting used to the protocol.
No, no, no. Because of the, just the state we're in right now, we're being very lenient on the two-minute time limit.
Okay, I'm almost done.
I'm not putting that out, and if any board member wants to comment back to you, then they know they can freely do that as well, too.
Sure. That was just a question I directed.
It's time for discussion right now. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Okay. That's about all I had, except for flying over this whole area. It's coming. We all know it's coming. In closing, I just want to say I'm praying for you guys for the wisdom and everything we can do to help our community. Anything you need from me, Board, to let me know. Nobody knows the river more than me. There's some people that know it equally, but I'm pretty. I lived here all my life and been on the river all my life, have been up and down it multiple times. So thank you. I'm scared and just want to do, give praise where praise is due and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Yes, sir. To your, your comment about farmers being paid to receive water. I believe there's some program that Tulare County was doing and had to be over 10 days ago. I forwarded that. I can't remember if I sent that to Mr. Hill, but I'm going to go back through my email. And so as they put out that information, that's a model that it's, I think someone should be looking at, too, to at least look at it and then, and then make decisions. But what you're asking for is not unheard of.
Yeah, 21 days ago, Lee Moore Canal was charging farmers to take water. So we got to get the canal company, their gate district on board with that, too. We don't handle the water, so they do that.
Yes.
Lee Moore Canal was charging farmers. They said, well, if I got to pay for it, I'm not taking it. So it was only $5 an acre foot, but still, it's kind of an insult. So but of course, 21 days ago, we didn't have flooding, so it's happening really fast. So people are coming together now pretty good. And the levees, the levees, we don't have control of the levees in the lake bottom. That's controlled by Boswell. They've been building them up and maintaining them at all, I mean, the whole time. I spent about four hours inside 749 on Saturday, and it's too wet to even get out in the field. So if they got a tractor out there with midharvester on it or a planter on it, they can't get it out. So they may lose that equipment because that background is heavy and slimy, and it's hard to move. So I talked to some of the ranch managers out there, and yeah, they haven't been dried up from the rainstorms, let alone the flood. So flood's coming fast, so we're all in it together. We'll just work together.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Gentlemen?
Thanks, sir.
The next speaker is Edward Neal.
Hey, good morning, sir.
Hey, good morning. How you guys doing?
Mr. Mayor.
Hey, former.
Hey, I always got the title.
All right. How you guys doing? I hope everybody's doing quite well. What I'm here to address is, first of all, 15644 17th Avenue, Lee Moore, California. That's where I live. That's Mr. Joe Neves' district. Right, you could throw a rock to the reservation from where I am. There's a couple of questions I want to ask. Can we be more transparent? I know you guys are, far as mellers or any kind of way to let us know about the situation with the water. That's the question, too, I'm addressing you guys with. Any way you guys can do any kind of mellers like that to let the neighbors know what's going on besides hearing it on the news?
If, if I can.
Question. Go ahead, Council.
If I can comment, then, you know, we appreciate you posing these questions, and we can certainly follow up with information. But as far as the inter exchange and exchange and answering the questions, we've got to avoid getting into a debate on the issues or, because this is not an agendized item for today. So please ask your questions. We'll record them, and we'll, we'll find a way to follow up with you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead to speak freely.
If I may, it wasn't a debate. It was a question. And the question was, we have people live in Mr. Neves' district, and we support him. We have people live in your district. We have people live in everyone's district. All I'm saying is, is any kind of way that there will be information for us to get it. Because a lot of people that live around here, they have no clue what's going on. And they might hear it on the news, or they might hear it during my Facebook, because I'm a Facebook fanatic. But other than that, we also have, where the water, where's the low points at? Well, where are the low areas at? Can we address that question or no, not even that question?
Yeah, I'm going after that. So we have our County of Kings website, and we have a spot you can click on with flood information on it.
Thank you so much.
And on that, it has a FEMA flood map that's current, 2023. You can find your address, find your house there, and see if you're going to be affected by, in the flood zones. So by the darker the blue, the more you should be concerned. If you know white, you're probably okay. Lighter blue, you're probably going to get wet, but not that bad. So you can go on to countykings.com, look for flood information, go on flood maps, and you can find your house and address. And it, I don't think we have elevations on there yet, but it'll show you by color if you should be concerned or not. And it shows the whole system in Kings County. And Fresno County has the same thing as well.
All right. Thanks, Supervisor. Let's get information.
Okay, lastly, I'm not being facetious sarcastical about this, but is there any way that they have information, like if we need sandbags?
Yeah, that's on there.
That's on there, too. We have six series, I believe, right now to pick up sandbags. For you, it'd be City of Lee Moore, the closest one. And we just put sand and sandbagged at the island fire station on Friday. And I think we did three truckloads, and it was gone by Sunday night. But we had more delivered yesterday.
Thank you very much. That was about it.
Let's go get the bags empty. All that dirt you got. Might as well fill them right there. She don't got to lug them.
Low point, then.
Yes, sir.
All right. God bless you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll share that with you on Facebook, Eddie, okay?
Thank you so much, sir.
The next speaker is Phil Hanson.
Hey, good morning, Ms. Hanson. Welcome back.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and the Board. I was made aware that maybe my comments aren't necessary, that maybe they are going to cut the rest of the 749. But since I was here, I just wanted to put my comments on record. Is that, and I, and thank you for your ruling. The intent, I believe your intent was to cut the whole 749, not half, and that half is very full now, getting close to spilling over the Loveless Levee and also backing up the whole system to the east, flooding dairies, permanent crops. And I just believe that your intent, when you made that ruling, was that the lowest parts of the lake would flood first. And that is that area, as well as the, the Brown and Cousins. There, there's a reason why there's no permanent crops and dairies and houses and shops out in that area. It's because it's always flooded there first. And if the Loveless breaks, I'm worried there's dairies to the north of that are going to be at risk and also potentially Stratford. My neighbor to the north thinks that Stratford could be at risk because their levees aren't as high as they used to be. I, I don't have that data to prove that, but also squirrel holes and... Anyway, if that ruling was made to cut the rest of the 749, I appreciate that, and thank you. And I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Anybody else? Morning, Ms. Sheriff.
Your name and address for the record.
I think everybody knows where I'm at.
You're in the sky.
Good by now. Big Robinson, Kings County Sheriff. So just to give the full Board an update, I think I've told a couple of you. I have been in communication with three of the major Westside farmers and in, had a meeting with two of them yesterday. And the other one last week had a phone call discussion about taking as much water as they can. And all of them have committed to doing what they can to take as much water out of the lake bottom and push it into other areas. There are some challenges, and I had to take some notes on some of those challenges, like old pumps that no longer work that might need to be fixed and things like that. And so that is a work in progress. And I'm communicating regularly with them, trying to encourage what Willie said. So hopefully, hopefully, the message starts to get out there to all the smaller farms, too, as well, that they, they take as much as they can. So thank you.
Sheriff, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
On one of the farmer, I talked to him last week, and he, he, he would like the lake to fill up. It's easier for him to get the water once the lake is full.
Correct.
And it costs him $40 an acre foot to pump the water out before it gets to lake full. Can you check for that grower if it's possible to get reimbursed for his expenses to move the water out of the county?
Yep. I'll, I'll find out. And, and, and you're right, because some areas, they can't pump from until water gets there and gets to a certain height. So, yeah, I will find out. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Sheriff, thanks for doing the press conference last week, too. I think that was very helpful. I know a lot of stations picked it up, and even last night, I even, I saw more footage of you at the podium giving good information. And I think that's helped, especially the part that, that day you guys were stressing that motorists need to heed the road closure signs. And since you've said that, I've seen you guys have to rescue at least two people.
Yeah.
For going past the sign.
Yeah.
Admitting they read it.
And, and we did put out a request for Caltrans to place some signage at I-5 in Utica because we know that a couple of people just came in off of there to, because that's a popular route to come in from the south to the north to Corcoran. And so hopefully, that's taken place. They were hopefully going to get on that this week, so.
A sign at I-5 in Utica?
Yeah.
You were trying to say, don't come this way.
Exiting, you know, I-5 in Utica, a lot of people do that, and then they cut across Utica and up Sixth Avenue.
Yeah.
And, and that's where we ran into the problem. So, so we're trying to get some signage. So that way, they know to take an alternate out from I-5 and not go that direction. And then also Public Works is working on getting some K rails, concrete K rails out for hard closures because right now people are driving around the signs and into, into those higher-risk areas. Also, if you get a chance on the G drive, yesterday, our airplane flew the entire Cross Creek section and part of the Tulie section and also South Fork, and they narrated as they went along and also opened up some mapping to show the waterways as, as they were narrating yesterday, when they went up yesterday afternoon. So if you get a chance to look at the video from yesterday's airplane flight, I think it'll offer a nice perspective for all of you to see kind of what's where and, and how things are looking.
Okay, thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Sir, anybody else at this time?
I have no more speaker cards. Doesn't appear like anyone online has their hand raised.
Okay. Thank you. Then let's move forward with... Okay. Good morning, Madam Dear.
Thank you for entertaining me, but I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Edward Hill. It's my understanding that this is his last meeting, and I have to say that I've had a very positive experience with him, and I very much appreciated all of the assistance that he provided me in taking office. And I just want to thank him and wish him well, and I hope that he has the greatest amount of success in his next job. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Dear. Mr. Hill, I think maybe you'll have some comments at the end of the meeting, towards the end?
Okay.
All right.
But he's leaving?
He's leaving.
And who? He owed me like 16 lunches.
He's going to have to go to Fresno to get those.
That's why I got a place up there.
Roost Chris. Okay. All right, sir. Okay, we'll move on. Approval of the minutes. Item A, report out a closed session from special meeting for March 18th, 2023. Counsel?
Yes, as reported on March 21st, 2023, the Board of Supervisors met in closed session on March 18th pursuant to Government Code Sections 54956.5 and 54957A. After hearing testimony from public concerning impact of flood flows in Kings County, as a result of that meeting, the Board found it necessary to provide for the protection of life and property and issued its second order regulating flood flows in Kings County. Copies of the orders and the minutes of the meeting were posted and broadly disseminated as required by law.
It's that Saturday, March 18th, right?
The meeting occurred on March 18th. It was reported out on March 21st, but as it is agendized, and this was the next, we're reporting out today as well.
Okay. Then... Do we have a motion or a second on that?
I'm sorry, there doesn't need to be a motion on the reporting out of minutes, the reporting out of closed session. The decisions were made in closed session, and the reporting out doesn't require a motion or a vote.
Okay. Then, then I do at least want to comment. Any board members have a comment on this? Okay. I at least want to comment for the record something that is, is, is bothering a lot of people out in public and is quite frankly bothering me. And I hope that there is action being taken today. But when you talk about the special meeting on Saturday, March 18th, and the vote that the Board passed by majority, when you look at the language on here, and I got, and I got a copy of the order that we, we took a lot of time to, as we were writing up this order, we sat here and, and you typed up the order and, and made sure that it was per 100% what the Board was voting on. And that, that order states, "Planned flooding of the Tulare Lake Bottom Reclamation District 749 shall occur by cutting the levee at the highest point." Okay? And when you go 10 days later, that has not happened. It has not happened. And for the record, I just want to put on question why an order that was given by the Board of Supervisors 10 days later has not been followed. I understand the process of the EOC, which the EOC was activated the following Monday on the 20th. And the model of the EOC says there are certain officials besides the Board of Supervisors that are in that room and are navigating and leading through this emergency, okay? But prior to the EOC, when we had the power and the authority, we took the time to the special meeting. We heard people. There's a lot of people in the room that day, and we, we voted on an order. And when you look at to the letter of this order, much less the spirit of it, it, it has not been followed. And so I'm hoping that something is going to get directed by that because 10 days is a lot of time to go by. In 15 years that I've been here, I've never once seen the Board take up an item, get a majority vote passed, and then not be followed. And it's disappointing to me, and it's disappointing to a lot of people in my district, and I would dare to say outside of my district, around the county, based on the people that were in the room that day of the special meeting and the comments, the comments that we heard. So I think that was a proper time to say it, versatile and scheduled appearances. But since we took it up, I wanted to put my, my feelings on the matter on public record. And because I don't think people understand, regular people back home, for lack of a better term, the citizens of the county don't understand, oh, the EOC is in charge. The buck stops with us right here anytime we like it or not. The buck stops with us. No one is going to come. If come June of next year and Corcoran is underwater, no one's going to blame the EOC. They're going to blame Supervisor Richard Valley because water entered the city of Corcoran on his watch and on our watch. People don't, already don't trust government as it is. They're not going to trust government to say, oh, the water's creeping up, but don't worry, the EOC is in session. They're in that little room at the county. They don't think that way. And, and to say that people don't trust the government, all you got to do is look at Allensworth and Alpa. Those people got the order to evacuate over a week ago, and it was a text message. And half the people are still there, and they're there night and day with their tractors and volunteers, and they're shoring up levees to protect their homes and what they still have to protect in Alpa and Allensworth. And those people left out there, no one's helping those people. Only a handful of people helping them, but officials aren't helping them. Why didn't they leave? Because they don't trust government. They worked their whole lives to have a small ranch or a small farm. And just because the government sent out a text message saying to leave, they're not going to pick up and leave. And the same thing here with the county. We're no different, all right? We're the five faces, and people expect us to leave. I've respected the model of the EOC. But prior to the EOC being activated, there's an order right here, and it's not been followed. And I'm not happy about it. I don't know how the other board members feel about it, but it was a majority vote, and this is not taking place, and I'm going to put that on the record. So thank you. We'll move on to... Do you need to take Item B up, or did you cover Item B with Item A?
Item B will be taken up separately, and I can report out from March 21st. On March 21st, 2023, the On March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, the board voted to appoint Curia Martinez as Acting C A O effective March one, it is March one.
April, April.
Effective April one, twenty twenty-three, her compensation will be set by the board in open session at the board's meeting on April fourth.
Okay, thank you. No action for that, right?
No action is required.
The next two items you need action on, right? C and D.
Yes.
There are no questions, comments, Ms. Chair, move for adoption of the minutes of the special meeting on the eighteenth as well as the regular meeting on March twenty-first.
Thanks Supervisor Neves. Second, can we get a second?
Second.
Second by Sue Robinson. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Item passes five in favor. Thank you. We have multiple items under consent calendar, but if there are no questions or comments by the board, the chair will entertain a motion.
Neves moves as presented.
Second. Motion by Neves, second by Fagundes. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, looks like we have a short meeting under regular agenda items. There's only two items. Item A comes from administration. Good morning, Mr. Boyett.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Matthew Boyett, Kings County Administration. So before your board this morning is an amendment to the county's Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three um, ordinance which governs um, all of the regulations here in uh, the unincorporated areas of the county regarding uh, organic waste recycling and then edible food recovery. Um, it was uh, first heard September twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-two. Second reading occurred October fourth, twenty twenty-two, um, and then went into effect November third, twenty twenty-two. So since then, over the last several months, um, county staff have been in communication with our uh, current permitted haulers to solicit information input and feedback on the license agreements that are necessary um, for the ordinance and necessary for the um, licenses to become a um, uh, hauler uh, for all of our thirteen eighty-three regulations. And throughout those conversations, there were three areas of the ordinance that we identified that uh, needed to be amended in order for the agreements to speak to the ordinance as the ordinance is the local governing, you know, regulation over all of the thirteen eighty-three activities here in the county. So those three items are uh, an amendment and just uh, to let you know the um, ordinance that you have in your packets, uh, it has all of this in there. It has the amendments as well as there's a red line version in there um, highlighting what those uh, changes are. So you do have uh, this in your packet this morning. Um, the first change is to the license term. So initially, we had a three-year license term stated in our ordinance and um, the haulers have expressed a desire to have much longer terms in their licenses. So uh, staff were agreeable to that and so that is one of the changes uh, before your board this morning. The second um, amendment is the removal of a provision that would, uh, in the initial ordinance that required the haulers and Kings Waste and Recycling Authority, which we refer to as K W R A, to enter into agreements with each other. Um, but through comment of both K W R A and the haulers uh, and their desire to remove that provision, county staff were fine with removing that provision as well. So that is being uh, removed from this amendment before your board this morning. And then lastly, um, there was some desire to have a, some sort of an appeal process for any revocation of a hauler license due to uh, breach of the ordinance or breach of the hauler license itself. And so we submitted uh, uh, for amendment this morning a two-step approval process where in the event that a hauler license is revoked or denied by the uh, Public Works Director, the hauler can appeal that um, and you know, have that heard uh, before a hearing officer, which would be essentially appointed by the chairman of the board um, and a decision rendered. Upon rendering of that decision, that decision can then be appealed to a three-member uh, Board of Supervisor panel. So um, that uh, is outlined in there to allow um, any hauler that has been um, has had their license revoked, a process in order to appeal that and um, make any corrections necessary. Um, so with that, those are the three amendments before your board this morning. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So uh, in speaking with the three haulers, based on the model that the board chose.
Yes.
Right, there were two models uh, last year that, that we could um, pick.
Correct.
Can you, can you state those two models again, just the titles of them?
Yeah, so there was a, a free market model and then a franchise zone model.
And we went with the free market?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm told last week that you are nowhere near close, any of those three haulers signing on to the agreement uh, based on the model we chose on free, on the free enterprise model. Are you telling the board today that if we approve these amendments, you have assurance from these three haulers that they'll sign on?
There's no guarantee that any of the haulers are going to sign the agreements as of me standing before you this morning. I don't have any of those in hand, but um, I wouldn't go as far to say that all three haulers are, you know, in strict opposition with what we're doing. Um, you know, they're, they all, I've, I've received different comments from all three. Um, and you know, not all of them are the same. So um, but there's this, and these amendments here don't assure anything other than the ordinance, you know, being agreeable to the uh, license agreement that we gave to the haulers to, for their, you know, consideration.
When the board, when we voted and we went off to um, the uh, free enterprise model, now that the dust has settled, because every county, because of this Senate bill, we had to do it. No one wanted to do it. Um, and I agree with everyone that we didn't want to do it. But now that the dust has settled, is Kings County the only county out of all fifty-eight counties that chose this model?
I've been told that uh, throughout this whole process. I can't prove that one way or the other. I haven't surveyed all of the other counties.
Yeah.
But uh, I have been told that by, I think, one of the haulers.
Yeah, I didn't understand a lot honestly when it's being presented, but when you look at it, you just look at one block and you got three haulers, three different companies. And if I don't want you, then one of these other haulers is going to come down my block and pick up my trash. But these other two haulers have already been down my block, skipped me because I didn't want them. Now you got three companies going down the same block. And I understand that at that time, but there's a reason why we're the only county, I think, I think we got to look at it, did we make the wrong decision? And if we made the wrong decision, how long are we going to keep going down that road? Um, just because we invested time, resources, I get that and it's costly. And again, no fault to us. It's because we're trying to follow this Senate bill that nobody likes. But I think that there should be a serious consideration to bring this back. Take a look at it now with a clearer lens and a, a better understanding and just find out if we made the wrong choice and um, then have an opportunity to consider it because what good does it do if we force this down the three haulers um, to sign it and they don't sign it? What happens if you can't get one company to sign on to this? What happens? No, no waste gets picked up? Everyone has to self-haul their own waste to the landfills, right?
If it gets to that point, I'm not sure what direction we would take to address that.
Okay. All right, well, do we have the ability to ask the board right now, uh, under the way the language is, this agenda item, if the board wants to consider bringing, just bringing this whole thing back and take a look at both models one more time? Or we just got to go on a yes or no vote on what's before us?
Uh, I'll have, uh, I'll let Cannon Council correct me if I'm wrong, but this is an agendized item. You're free to have those discussions. However, I do want to clarify one matter. It's just not the work and time that's been put into it, but this plan has been approved by CalRecycle, which is the governing body. And if we don't move forward with the current process, we face the possibility of being fined by them on a regular basis. So that's a real driver on continuing with this process because it's a plan that has been a year in the making, submitted and approved by them. Uh, so if we change course, they'll, there may be repercussions from CalRecycle. Uh, so again, your board has the ability to bring this item back at a later date, uh, take it up now. Uh, I just want to make sure your board is aware of the possible repercussions through CalRecycle in this state.
Thanks, thanks, Sheriff Council.
And I would like to add that it is agendized for introducing um, and waiving the first reading of the amended ordinance. Um, I think that anything beyond that would be a request that it come back for further consideration rather than action to change course today. Um, so the action should be on the amendment. If you want this to come back for further consideration as to changing course and direction of the model that we're following, then I would suggest that it is agendized um, on that issue for another time.
Okay. Any of the board members get any feedback from the haulers, Sue Burbank?
No, I have no, no feedback, but I have a question. So we chose free market because the last time at the Canadies, we didn't want to tell people who had to pick up their trash. It was a big fight. So now we're finding out this is not the ideal market for this type of service, correct? From other counties? Have you heard anything? Or can you check on that?
I, I can check on that, but I, I have not.
We chose the wrong one and, and it's not working out. If we have to uh, identify a hauler to pick up a certain area that's in that service area, then we need to do that. Uh, I understand, you know, three trucks going in the same neighborhood to pick up one trash can. Uh, and I haven't heard from anybody. I, I can call uh, Mid Valley and get some ideas, but uh, you know, I, we'd only have a big area that's affected by it, so it's not really on the radar. But if we're hearing bad things and other counties are making it work, we should probably reconsider. I don't know. I mean, it was off my radar, so can you check what other counties, what's coming through if they're having any issues?
Sure.
And I'll, I'll check or Joe can check with Mid Valley, uh, see what, what he's hearing. I haven't talked to anybody, but I can call him.
Anyone else find what's behind it?
Part of it, as you're talking, uh, Ms. Chair, is that the um, it was a referendum from the voters that was their choice to select the hauler. Um, it wasn't dictated by this board. Um, and you know, you can survey all of the other counties, but then part of that discussion has to be the cost. Because without having those franchise areas and those franchise agreements, um, it's a free market enterprise. And so if somebody offers you a lower rate, you have the opportunity to take advantage of that. And the haulers, of course, want franchise agreements so that they have ultimate control and can set the rates in that area. Um, the other thing is it's not just one truck. It's usually three trucks. One for the black can, one for the green can, one for the blue can. And so when you start doing the multiplication, um, you know, factor, it's not just one truck going through your neighborhood.
It's nine?
It's six or nine, you know, six usually. Um, so there, there are several things to do and we are, I think, the last county in this state that uh, have not gone to franchise agreements because when we tried um, in the past, when the county tried that past, it um, it was met with a lot of opposition. And we do have a taxpayer group that um, did not allow franchises to be established in Kings County. So we would have to go against that referendum.
Yeah, I'm not doing that. That was a big fight.
Yeah, so.
On, on the flip side, all of the haulers that I, I would um, offer testimony that that kind of led that charge, none of them around anymore. You, you know, and because at one time we had five or six different haulers in the county. There, now there's, you know, the, the big three. And so, you know, they, and again, they want to be able to monopolize their franchise agreements.
I'm going to guess that, you know, you got Mid Valley and Thule, right? The only two we have.
Waste Management?
Which one?
Waste Management.
Uh huh. So. I don't think Waste does residential. I think they just do commercial.
So we have a small area that's going to have multiple trucks in there and neither one wants to do the job unless they get the whole agreement to make the cost work, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we get penalized if we go a different direction?
The current statute, there's an opportunity for them to penalize us. Uh, again, this was a, a discussion that's been over a year in the making. It had to be approved by Caltrans. Uh, they have approved this plan. So that being said, that doesn't mean we can't bring it back and reconsider it. Uh, and in fact, your board made comments that we knew that there would be changes needed to the ordinance as we move forward. Uh, but if, if this action isn't taken today, uh, there is the chances of, of us having to pay a fine or repercussions from CalRecycle.
CalRecycle, not Caltrans.
CalRecycle.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. In fairness to you, a year ago, was it your staff recommendation that we went the uh, franchise agreement route versus we went opposite of what was being recommended to us, right?
Uh, that's not, uh, it, we presented both options and the board chose the free market option. We didn't take a stance on which model.
No, no, I'm not looking for some blame. I'm trying to, I'm trying to clear it up because
No, it's fair.
I don't, I don't think.
Thank you.
I don't think Mr. Boyett's going to get, we could vote on this all we want and get a five oh vote. I don't think Ms. Boyett's going to get anyone to sign these. What I'm being told is a snowball's chance in hell. So, but how long, so you penalize, right? We went, we went down this road. Is it right to keep going down the road? It's like the sheriff said. I came off I five, twenty minutes down Utica and I saw this sign. I ain't turning around. I got twenty minutes invested in this drive down this road. And then they got to call nine one one, come rescue me off the roof of my truck. Do we keep going down a road that I think we just made the wrong decision? I think we're big enough to say, hey, let's reconsider it. And if we made the wrong decision, maybe we have an opportunity to make the right decision now. Is there any appetite for that from the board to, there's a couple of ways we could do it. We could table this item, have Matthew go call and say, hey, look, if the board approves these amendments, would you sign? And then come back and give us honest feedback on what they said? Or we could just say, bring back an action item for reconsideration.
I'd like to offer a third option. You could go forward with the amendment today in order to keep the present course on track, but then you could bring it back at a later date for consideration about whether uh, you want to change the model. Um, this would allow uh, it to move forward in its current condition as expected, but not deprive the board of the opportunity of changing its mind.
Okay.
And we would be able to bring that to your board pretty quickly because it's, we already have all the documentation and the presentation is ready from the last. We just probably have to update some numbers.
Okay. Well, then the board will, unless there's more discussion, the board will entertain a motion either way, whatever it's the pleasure of the board.
Ms. Chair, I think we ought to go ahead and move forward with this and note realizing that we may have to amend it in the future to um, um, allow franchise areas to be part of that. I, I think it would be premature because this, this has already went to print and already had the setup for the first reading. But um, I'm not afraid of the language that is in this current um, um, ordinance. Uh, but I, I would, uh, so I would move that this go ahead and move forward knowing that there could be the possibility of moving to a franchise agreement if that's what you want to do.
Got it. And I'll, I'll second that. And Matthew, I, I would just talk to both handlers and say, you know, or maybe it's like, we may have to force it, we have to change it. But if they can come to an agreement and, and one of them pick it and take care of it, that'd be great. Uh, and we won't have to change anything. But this is, this is too small of an uh, area. It's going to cost too much money for the handlers and the cost to taxpayers at the end of it, or the users, uh, to have a truck come and pick up the forty-five trash cans or whatever it is when everybody can have a freaking goat. Eat the leftover trash. We're good. We don't need another truck to come in here.
And.
This is a stupid bill.
And uh, or a compost pile or whatever, because yeah, you, you will be moving from, from three trucks to four.
Yeah.
Uh, when you, when you start bringing in the edible waste and the composting.
Yeah, but I mean, it's really just a stupid.
Correct.
A truck.
And the other stupid part is a lot of this material could go in the green waste. There's absolutely no reason, not in state law.
It may, if you don't want to pay the service fee.
Exactly.
Yeah.
A new truck costs one point five million dollars. So when these haulers got to go buy new trucks, they, I mean, that goes under there.
Thirty-five homes at fifteen bucks a month is going to take a long time to pay for that.
Yeah, you ain't never going to pay.
So I'll support the amendments just so you have the ability to go and see if you can get this signed. And if you don't, then we bring it back like Sue Neves says, it gives us an opportunity later.
Not at your fault. You got to blame somebody.
Yeah.
And just for.
You just happened to be standing there, so it worked out well.
For clarity, this is an ordinance. So today is the first reading, um, introduction and first uh, reading of the ordinance. And then it will come back again for a second reading. If I understand the motion correctly, the motion is to introduce and waive the first reading of the amendment, amended ordinance for Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three requirements.
Oh, I was going to make Matthew read it.
And to save time, you can bring the second reading back next week. So we'll make it another week. Okay.
It's on the, uh, it's anticipated that the second reading comes back next week and then effective thirty days after that, after the second reading.
Okay.
And we can bring the discussion. And we can bring the discussion after that reading as well next week.
Okay.
We can agenda two separate items.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Chair. We got a motion by Nev, second by Verboen. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Item passes five in favor. Thank you.
Put on this this year or last year? I think it was January because we went to lunch.
Last year.
Last year?
Well, and actually we're about 16 months late. It was, the bill actually went in in January of '22. So here we are in, well, last meeting in March 23.
I went to the presentation by Mid Valley and they put a lot of money into getting this done.
Oh, no.
I haven't talked to him yet, too, though.
Yeah, yeah. You know, so that, yeah, we are, we are almost a year and a half behind. We're 16 months behind where we should be, but I, I don't know of too many jurisdictions that are where they should be.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Boyett. Last item, item B, comes from Public Health Department. Good morning, ma'am. Would you like to present your item?
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman, Supervisors. I'm here today to provide you hopefully a final update on COVID-19 and the end of the state of emergency updates. As you may recall, on March 14th, I gave you updates to the reduction in isolation times of a person who tests positive. It's now five days post-positive test as long as they're feeling well and have improving symptoms and are fever-free. The additional updates, these were state health officer orders that they're now sort of rescinding or unwinding. The updates will go into effect at midnight on April 2nd, officially starting Monday, April 3rd. And the updates being put in place are related to the following areas. Masking in high-risk and healthcare settings. Masks will no longer be required in indoor high-risk and healthcare settings. This includes healthcare, long-term care facilities and correctional facilities, as well as homeless, emergency and warming and cooling centers. Vaccine requirements for healthcare workers, while the federal rules continue to ensure that most healthcare workers remain vaccinated for COVID-19, the state will no longer require vaccination for healthcare workers, including those in adult care, direct care, correctional facilities and detention centers. Hospital surge order, California Department of Public Health will rescind an order that requires hospitals statewide to accept transfers of patients from facilities with limited intensive care units capacity. ICU capacity has not been limited during the recent COVID-19 surges after broad use of vaccines and treatments. And lastly, vaccine data collection, rescinding a prior order that requires providers to ask patients for their email address and/or mobile phone numbers when receiving COVID-19 vaccinations. Recently enacted legislation, AB 1797, requires that California health providers put all vaccinations into a database, the California Immunization Registry. Most of the COVID-19 data and additional information is located on our website, kcdph.com. And as always, we'd like to remind everybody to stay home when they're sick, but masks are no longer required in healthcare settings as of Monday. And this concludes my report and I'm available for any questions.
We'll see you next week under the fungus.
Under the fungus. Multiple different things. Now, so far, COVID's low, flu's low, RSV's low.
Okay.
And we just have water and.
Mold.
Well, that's the longer term.
Yeah.
Impacts, right?
Water contamination.
Yeah.
Thank you for, you and your staff for all the work.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support. So this, I am pretty sure this is.
Unless Supervisor Verboen has a mucky pox update.
I'm good. I'm good. I'm not touching that. I took my test. I took a mucky pox test, but they have to.
All right. That goes, that concludes the agenda items. Now we're on board member announcement. Supervisor Nev.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Continue to be engaged with a lot of flooding issues all around the county. The LAFCO meeting that was held, we went ahead and released the 2023-2024 budget and set the public hearing for April 19th, if you're interested in that operation. Kings County Area Public Transit Agency wrapped up the public hearing for unmet transit needs and a final report will be voted on in June. We also approved the application of a low and no emissions grants for buses and infrastructure and whether that's electric or hydrogen or what, what other ideas come up. We also approved the on-demand transit in Avonale for a three-month pilot program. And so that'll kick off April 1st. Also, the Hanford Uber service will be transitioning to an Ecoline application. Lamar is currently using that Ecoline application for its transportation abilities and that application has the ability to pay for the ride as well as schedule your rides. And, and so the pay part of it continues to be developed and evolving. There are approximately 600 people in the county using that application to enhance their public transportation issues. At the Kings County Association of Governments, the commission received a report on the Transportation Development Act funding. We also finalized the regional corridor needs study, approved the top 10 most dangerous intersections in the county. And after some discussion, you know, we went ahead and approved that list based on Caltrans information, but there was some questions of some of those locations. We also approved the Transportation Development Act, the finance and compliance and audit reports. Corcoran and Avonale audits were still incomplete and so those funds will be withheld until those audits are brought up and completed. And then the 2023 Valley Voice trip to Sacramento with Terry King and Doug Verboen representing the outreach activities in Sacramento will take place this week?
Tonight.
Tonight? So good luck on that. And then also some information on housing and workshop and planning activities for sustainable communities. The master plan for aging continues to meet. The community outreach results will continue to stay the focus part of the discussion. Planning efforts continue as we review the survey questions. And many of the services that people are looking for are really already being provided, but we're not being communicated enough. As Mr. Neal pointed out, our communication skills are not hitting the right individuals. And so we're trying to devise a plan to try to do a little bit better outreach for some of those individuals. So we'll see how that goes. And I think that's pretty much across the board. The Central California Blood Center was on campus. There were 37 registered, 28 donations, along with a couple of walk-ins and certainly want to thank that on behalf of the Kings County employees as well as the California, Central California Blood Center. Also had a meeting with Valley caregivers and their services are available to families and seniors with questions about traveling that caregiving journey. Caregivers have been around for three or four decades and they are available to speak at service clubs and presentations and senior citizen groups and any families looking for information as, as you try to find options in order for caregiving for individuals. And then yesterday, the Cal ID and Remote Access Network Board reviewed the maintenance agreements on all the live scan devices. And that will come to this board for final approval at some time in the future. And they also approved both budgets for the upcoming year. So with that, thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thanks, Supervisor Nev. Sue Vasfagundes, you got anything, sir?
The only thing I have is a lot of phone calls. People asking information on the road closures and, and the safety of some of the bridges. So, and I've been referring them to the Sheriff's Department, that they can get the most and best information. So.
Sure.
That, thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor. Supervisor Verboen?
Thank you. So Tuesday, had a lot of questions on flooding. Went to lunch with some of my friends. Travis Lopes called me and said that he'd been bombarded with questions about the flooding. So at that point, I decided to have a town hall meeting. So from Tuesday evening to Thursday evening, we've been about, I think, 46 hours took to get a group of people together. We had over 200 people show up to the town hall meeting. It was very well attended, got information out to everybody, good response, got some sand delivered to Station Number Six on Island School District. They used three truckloads of sand in less than two days to prepare for the flooding. Great, great event there. Tuesday afternoon or Tuesday evening, I got a phone call from a friend of mine that's going around the dairies, doing the elevation around dairies, see if they're going to get flooded or not, and found a covert plugged up on 43 by one of the, as Cross Creek crossed underneath 43. And it was getting ready to flood a guy's house out. I was able to call Abraham Valencia like 5:30. By 6:30, it was all cleared out and Brett was gone. So they did a good job that night. I mean, it was good to have it. I mean, it, it worked. I also got a phone call that day from a couple growers upset about the possibly losing their dairy and losing some bridges. We had a milk creek running over at that point. We drove out there, saw milk creek, identified it, made some phone calls to Corcoran Irrigation District. They're aware of it and since has receded, so it's not a threat to that dairy on Fourth Avenue. Driving home, I taken the grower back and I came across Houston Bridge. I'm like, that didn't feel right. So made a call to Dominic and took a picture of Kansas Avenue Bridge as well. It didn't feel right too. So found out that that bridge was getting ready to start to crumble. So that's not good. Yeah, Thursday night, had a, had a large group of people. Friday, I sat on a conference call for five hours for Amtrak. We deauthorized Antioch Station and we're going to open it up in about a year and a half to the Oakley Station. It's six mile difference, but state-of-the-art facility. Bart is doing the same thing on Amtrak or Santa Fe Railroad. You cannot do, you can only do one for one. You have to get, decommission the station to get a new station. It was a big deal for this town of Antioch, enlisted a lot of testimony, but it was probably the right thing to do. So that took a lot of time. Here today.
Thank you.
Oh, I went to the Hanford Sunset Rotary, great stakeout on Saturday night. Very well attended and a good event.
Thanks, Supervisor Verboen. Supervisor Robinson.
First of all, thank you to Supervisor Verboen and kudos for hosting the town hall meeting out there in the Island District.
No alcohol and the people still showed up.
Best party I've been to without alcohol. Good job. Great way to disseminate information out there, particularly on the water. And, and just a host of brass was there to, to help everybody out with their questions. So thank you. Also, thanks to Sheriff Robinson. Thank you to Sergeant Jerry Hunter and Senior Deputy Eric Johnson on Saturday. They took me up in the sheriff's aircraft to take a look at the water situation. So we went from Cross Creek all the way down to Corcoran to see, to see some of the, some of the issues. So we continue to, to monitor that. A bird's eye view is the best way to see it. And so I just want to, want to thank them for, for all their efforts there. Saturday night, I too went to the Sunset Rotary Stakeout Dinner. So thank you. It's always nice to have Harris Ranch Steaks and their hospitality. Also, I concur with just turning hacker. Thank you, Mr. Hill. I will, I will miss you. Thank you for, for all of your help, particularly to me, since I'm the new guy. So much appreciated. Good luck to you in Fresno.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good luck to you. Best wishes, Stevens Hill. Thank, thank you for your service. Appreciate you. You're a good CAO and I wish.
Got someone to blame now.
Yeah.
Got someone to blame. We were doing great. Had left, it's all messed up.
And with that, my comments are under item 3A and I'll, I'll leave them there. So, Board Correspondents.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board Correspondents, your board received a public notice from Chemical Waste Management regarding the Kettleman, excuse me, the Kettleman Hills facility. Your board received correspondence dated March 16th, 2023, from Reef Sunset Unified School District regarding donations to support educational efforts. For upcoming events, the We Can't Run, Walk or Roll Without You will take place on Saturday, April 1st. This will be a 5K run and one-mile walk benefiting United Cerebral Palsy, Central California, and all proceeds will stay locally. The 5K registration fee is $30 and the one-mile walk is free. For more information on registration, please visit the ucpcc.org website. The event will take place at Civic Center Park located at 400 North Doughty Street, Hanford, with an 8:00 AM check-in. Sarah A. Mooney Museum will be celebrating its 182nd birthday celebration on Saturday, April 1st from 12:00 to 3:00. There will be an ice cream, there will be ice cream by rolling cones. There'll also be live outdoor music, a bounce house, games, vendors and prizes. The Children's Storybook Garden and Museum will be hosting its Bunny Brunch and Easter Celebration on Saturday, April 1st at 175 East 10th, Hanford. There will be a Bunny Brunch from 9:30 to 11:30. The cost is $25 for kids and $10 for adults and it includes games and an Easter egg hunts. Tickets can also be purchased for only the Easter celebration without the brunch at $12 per child and $5 for adults. There will be a bike rodeo hosted by the Avonale Community Activities Department on April 1st from 11:00 to 1:00 at Floyd Rice Park in Avonale. Bring your bike, helmet and a parent. There'll be bike skill events and safety checks. Also, starting earlier that same day at 10:00, there will be an Easter egg hunt in the Week of the Young Child with train rides, pony rides, crafts, bounce houses and clowns also at Rice Park. The Hanford Knights of Columbus will announce their 62nd Annual Palm Sunday Breakfast to be held on Palm Sunday at April 2nd at the Hanford Fraternal Hall. The fundraising event started in 1959 and has been going for 60 years with the exception of two years during the pandemic. The menu includes ham, scrambled eggs, hash browns, potatoes, bread, coffee and many other breakfast delights. The, the Palm Sunday Breakfast will start at 7:00 AM and go until noon. Takeouts are available upon request. Tickets are $15. It could be purchased from the Hanford Knights of Columbus member. For upcoming agenda items, administration has four items. Consideration regarding approval of the agreement for the transfer of Table A water and ancillary agreement with Westlake Farms. Consideration regarding appointments to the Kings County Agriculture Advisory Committee. Consideration regarding appointments to the Kings County Homelessness Collaborative. And consideration regarding Senate Bill 1383, second reading as we heard the first reading today. Community Development Agency has consideration regarding recommendations from the Water Commission concerning the Water Resources Oversight Commission formation and revisions to the ordinance number 706. Fire has two items. Consideration regarding acceptance of pass-through funding from CalOES and consideration regarding approval of California Fire Assistant Agreement Governing Body Resolution. Human Services has consideration to adopt resolution regarding Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. And Public Health has consideration to adopt a resolution regarding, recognizing April 3rd through the 9th as National Public Health Week. Also, as mentioned earlier, this is my last board meeting. I'm very grateful for all the support that the board has given me over the years, the department heads and all the staff that I've had the pleasure of working with over the last five and a half years. I think today is the most nervous I've ever been stepping into these board chambers and it's with good cause. Although I'm moving up the road a little bit, I plan and continue to foster those friendships and relationships that I've made over the years, as long as you guys will answer my phone calls. I will be seeing many of you at CSAC and other county and state events, so I look forward to, again, fostering those relationships and I will really miss this place. So, thank you.
If I could add, so I, you're going to be, we really enjoyed having you here. Appreciate you giving your time and dedication to us for the last year and a half. But we still know the board members up there. We can make your life a living hell.
Ain't one of them your cousin?
What, uncle?
Uncle? Well, yeah.
If it pleases your board, they've already made that clear as well.
Yeah. Thank, thanks, sir. And then I forgot during board member announcements, I don't see Bob Henry from Waste Management. He's not on, on the line right now, right? Anything on your, but I, well, I felt bad last week. We didn't say thank you to Mr. Henry. He bought all those beautiful floral bouquets arrangements for the pilots and the women that we recognized. And so, Mr. Henry, if you're out there, we, we do want to tell you thankful. We appreciate that. And I understand he did that out of his own pocket too and, and not through Waste Management. But every year since we've, we've done that, he's always sponsored the flowers, so we